Good morning, everyone. Here we are at another Lewis and Clark County Commission meeting this Thursday, June 26, 2025. Let's all start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, look at this fine group of people. Everybody is... Well, we're missing a couple over there. Okay, to my immediate... I'm Candace Payne. I'm the Chair of this Commission. And to my immediate left is Tom Rolfe, who's Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning. And running our meeting today is Nadine McNally, colleague. One of those Irish words. What? McCarty. You know, I grew up with a bunch of Norwegians, and I just haven't gotten my head around this Irish group. Good morning, Nadine. To my immediate right is Andy Hunthausen, who's been on the road, and we're glad to have him back, Nico Hash from the County Attorney's Office, and Keegan Shea, also from the County Attorney's Office, and Roger Balls, our C A O. Okay, with that... Oh, we have a sign-up sheet and an agenda, if you want to pick one up, over here on this table right in back of that bench there. And we will start with Item 2A, the Consent Action Item, as presented by Roger Balls and Marnie Bentley.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. As you just stated, it's Item 2A on your agenda. I'll read it into the record for your possible approval this morning. Vendor Claims Report for Weekend ending June 27, 2025. Staff recommends approval, and as you just said, Marnie Bentley is with us as usual today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of this from the Commission?
None here.
Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none. We should probably have a motion now.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Consent Action Item 2A, Vendor Claims Report for the Weekend ending June 27, 2025, as explained by Mr. Balls.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Consent Action Item Number 2A as presented by Roger Balls. Is there any further discussion amongst the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of this motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, Action Item 3A, the Bid Award for Mag Chloride Supply by Mr. Kevin Horn. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, Chair Payne. Commissioner Hunthausen, good morning. Commissioner Rolfe, good morning to you as well, sir.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Kevin Horn. Spelling on that is first name Kevin, K-E-V-I-N, last name is Horn, H-O-R-N-E. I'm the Operations Manager for Lewis and Clark County's Public Works Department. Chair Payne, Commissioners, before you today is Action Item Number 3A. It is entitled Bid Award Mag Chloride. On June 12, 2025, one bid was opened for the bulk magnesium chloride supply purchased needed for the 2025 summer season dust control and road stabilization projects. The Road Division anticipates needing up to 700 tons of the brine solution, not to exceed a total dollar amount of $110,000, as budgeted in the FY '26 Road Infrastructure Budget using road mill levy funding. Staff recommends awarding the supply contract to the low bidder, Dust Buster Enterprises LLC of Evanston, Wyoming, for the unit price of $175.75 per ton delivered, not to exceed $110,000, and authorize the Chair to sign all applicable purchase documents. And Chair Payne, I also have the award letter that, with your permission, I could read into the record as well.
I think you probably should read it into the record.
Thank you. This letter is addressed to Eric Needy. He is the CEO of Dust Buster Enterprises LLC. Dear Mr. Needy, you are notified that Dust Buster's Enterprise LLC is a successful bidder for the 2025 magnesium chloride supply purchased. The contract price is based on the unit price of $175.75 per ton delivered magnesium chloride we are offloading in our bulk holding facility located at 3402 Cooney Drive in Helena. The contract quantity of the brine solution shall not exceed 700 tons or $110,000. Delivery of the product shall be made within 72 hours of request by county staff, not including weekends and holidays. Deliveries to the 10,000-gallon bulk storage tanks will be made between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. local time, Monday through Thursday. No Friday deliveries, beginning June of 2025 and ending June 30 of 2026. Thank you for bidding, and we look forward to working with you. Sincerely, Candace Payne, Chair, Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Kevin. Does the Commission have any questions for Mr. Horn?
I've got... I have one, if I may.
Okay, Tom?
And when the original bid was opened, it was for a slightly higher amount, I think about $13,000 more. And apparently, this is the 110 was what we had originally budgeted and was rechanged to do, to keep it in that, or?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, great question. Yes, as I recall, the unit price per ton was, I believe, 158 last year, so we did see an increase in that. Typically, what we do is we keep the bid documents the same as the budget items. We will reduce that quantity. It's going to work out, I think, to 689 tons to make sure we stay within that budget. So, great question. Thank you. Hopefully, that clarifies it.
Yeah, thank you.
And the person we are contracting with agrees to this reduction in the price?
Chair Payne, absolutely, yes. In our bid documents, it says plus or minus 700 tons.
Okay. My other question is, they... At one point, the contract quantity of the brine solution, it's 700 tons, and then there's another place where it talks about gallons. Is this... I mean, is this liquid being delivered from Wyoming? Or how does this happen?
Chair Payne, a couple of questions there. I'll answer both of them. Yes, it's brought in in two trailers. They're tankers. They bring about 7,500 tons of solution in for us. The reason for... Not to get into a bunch of equations, there are so many gallons that refer to a ton. So, everything is... Everything comes in by the ton. That's what we pay for. We actually apply it in gallons, not to get everything confused. I believe there's 246, I think, gallons per ton, depending on what we're getting. And we do it by unit pricing. So, much like all of our bids, whether it be asphalt or gravels, we do it by unit price and not to exceed. Therefore, when we're doing all of our cost-tracking mechanisms, we know what that budget authority is. And the $175,000... $175.75 per ton, we monitor that through the process of the year. So, we do not exceed what Commissioner Rolfe said, that $110,000 budget. That's why we do everything by unit price. We pay in-place quantity.
Excellent. It's good to know. Thank you. Do you have any questions for him?
I do not. Thank you.
Hmm. Is there any public comment? Nope, nobody's out there on this issue. So, should we have a motion here?
Chair Payne, I'd move that we award the bid for mag chloride supply to Dust Buster's Enterprise LLC as presented by Mr. Horn.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the... This contract. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the bid award for the mag chloride supply as presented by Kevin Horn indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin. Oh, now he's leaving. Next on the agenda is Action Item 3B, Contract Between Lewis and Clark County and Rod Tabert Construction, Incorporated, to be presented by our friend Jessica Makas. Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning, Chair Payne. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Makas, the Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Before you this morning is a contract with Rod Tabert Construction, Incorporated, to provide concrete, mastic sealing, and asphalt repair services within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises in rural improvement districts. This maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications, which were due on June 2, 2025. This type of solicitation was used with the intent to create a roster of qualified contractors to work from the June 2025 period through June 2028 for a three-year period. Three statements of qualifications were received and reviewed by Public Works Department staff, based on the information that was included in that SOQ. Contracts were offered to all three contractors. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Rod Tabert Construction and authorize the Chair to sign contract... All contract documents. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Andy? Tom?
No.
Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Rod Tabert Construction, Incorporated, as explained by Jessica Makas.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this contract. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Rod Tabert Construction, Incorporated, as presented by Jessica Makas indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jessica. Oh, it's you again. Item 3C is the Contract Between Lewis and Clark County and Cap Paving, Incorporated, also presented by our friend Jessica Makas.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Commissioners, before you this morning is a contract with Cap Paving, Incorporated, to provide concrete, mastic sealing, and asphalt repair services within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for the maintenance arises. Again, this maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications due on June 2, 2025. Again, this type of solicitation was used to create a roster so that we could work with these different contractors as the need for this work arises. The period of time will be June 2025 through June 2028, and three statements of qualifications were received and contracts were offered to all three contractors. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Cap Paving, Incorporated, and authorize the Chair to sign all contract documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there any questions from the Commission? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, just... I've got... I just thought of something I'd like to ask Jessica. By having all three of... There were three bidders, is that correct? And we are entering into contracts with each of the three. And how do you go about figuring out which contractor you use on a specific project?
Chair Payne, that's an excellent question. Thank you. So, three contractors came in. This work is for concrete repair. It's for mastic sealing, and it's also for asphalt repair. These are lumped together because the work is similar. However, each of the contractors that submitted specialize in a different components. Not all three contractors do all three of those services. Tabert does the concrete and asphalt patching. Cap does asphalt and mastic sealing. And Z&amp;Z, which will be our third contract presented this morning, is interested only in the mastic sealing. From there, with each of those projects, we develop a scope as the work... As the need for the work arises. And we talk to each contractor based on the prices that they've put into the statement of qualifications that they've submitted. We work with them on that price point for the project, and then also their time. So, how quickly can they get the work done? So, initially, we look at cost, and then we look at availability, which is all outlined in that request for qualifications that went out.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't realize it was so complicated. Okay. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, I probably better have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the contract with Cap Paving as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Cap Paving. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor of approving the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Cap Paving as presented by Jessica Makas indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Item 3D, Contract Between Lewis and Clark County and Z&amp;Z Seal Coating, Incorporated, also presented by Jessica Makas. Go for it, Jessica.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Before you this morning is a contract with Z&amp;Z Seal Coating, Incorporated, to provide concrete, mastic sealing, and asphalt repair services within the various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under... Excuse me. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for the maintenance arises in the RIDs. Again, this maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications due on June 2, and three contractors submitted statements of qualifications for the work. These were reviewed by the Public Works Department and offered... Staff offered contracts to all three contractors. Staff recommend the approval of the contract with Z&amp;Z Seal Coating, Incorporated, and authorize the Chair to sign contract documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions from the Commission?
No.
Okay. I have a question. So, from the title of the company, Z&amp;Z Seal Coating, Incorporated, it appears to me that they may specialize in mastic ceilings. Would that be correct?
Chair Payne, that is correct.
Then, do they also do concrete work?
Chair Payne, this contractor came in with pricing only for the mastic sealing component.
So, just for the sake of, you know, educating me, why don't we just issue a contract for the mastic ceiling for this entity? And the same with the prior two contracts, that they appear to be specialty contractors. Why do we include all three items?
Sure. Chair Payne, these types of maintenance components have traditionally been lumped together because some of our contractors do all three. Tabert, who was our first contract this morning, has considered renting equipment over this three-year period to provide mastic sealing. Mastic sealing is a little bit new to Lewis and Clark County. This is something that's been more widely used by the Montana Department of Transportation. It's, you know, when you drive on MDT roads and you see that wide band of crack sealing versus kind of that's more narrow, rubbery, crack seal application. This is a newer application that allows for a little bit better sealing and a little bit broader use of that sealing. We lump these together so that we can hopefully have contractors that are able to do all three. A lot of times when we have concrete work out there, we also have to patch adjacent asphalt, so those need to be combined together. Mastic sealing is a newer product, but it is a little bit different than our traditional crack sealing. That's kind of like rubbery material in those narrow cracks. Mastic sealing is an aggregate. It's just a finer aggregate that's mixed with oil and applied with a shoe to create that wide band of patching. You can also use it on areas that have kind of sunk along a road shoulder or areas where you see that alligator-type cracking. Traditionally, that's how to... We have to dig that out and put an asphalt kind of rectangle in there to patch it. With this mastic sealing, we'll be able to use that material to just patch over that, which is going to be a lot more efficient. So, it's a little bit of a broad scope. We may not always do it this way in the future, but this allows just an efficient process for us to be able to work with these contractors on the scopes that they're comfortable with as well.
Thank you, Jessica. Any further questions for Jessica? Seeing none, is there any public comment? There being no public comment, we need a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Z&amp;Z Seal Coating, Incorporated, as explained by Jessica Makas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Z&amp;Z Seal Coating, Incorporated, as presented by Jessica Makas. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item 3E, Resolution 2025-49, to create the Canal Circle Rural Improvement District Number 2025-2, presented by Jessica Makas. Go for it, Jessica.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Again, my name is Jessica Makas, the Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today is a public hearing regarding Resolution 2025-49, the intention to create the Canal Circle Rural Improvement District. A petition to create the district was received by staff for the purpose of improving and maintaining Canal Circle. The proposed district is located west off Lake Helena Drive, about a quarter mile south of the Lake Helena Drive Canyon Ferry Road intersection. The petition was signed by 58% of property owners within the proposed district, satisfying Lewis and Clark County's policy to consider R I D petitions signed by at least 20% of property owners. There are a total of 12 properties included in the proposed district boundary. The general character of improvements includes the crushing, grading, and reshaping of the existing road material, installation of a 2-1/2-inch compacted asphalt overlay, and chip and fog sealing on the full extent of Canal Circle. Improvements will also include a culvert replacement at the Canal Circle and Lake Helena Drive intersection, and an asphalt tie-in for a smooth road transition. This project is part of the Lewis and Clark County Road Prioritization Effort, and the Public Works Department has budgeted the cost of the improvements into the fiscal year 26 road project budget. Road Department staff will complete the preparation of work, and the paving will be completed by Montana Material... Oh, excuse me. This will be done by Cap Paving, and the chip and fog seal will be completed by Bullock Contracting, LLC. The general character of maintenance will include snow plowing and sanding, grading, gravel maintenance... Excuse me, this is incorrect. General character of maintenance will include snow plowing and sanding, chip sealing, pothole patching, sweeping, and other maintenance as needed to preserve the road improvements. Annual maintenance is estimated to total $2,520, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a maintenance assessment of $210 per year. This annual maintenance assessment will be evaluated each year and adjusted for inflation where maintenance needs is necessary. If the resolution is passed today, legal notice of the intention to create the district will be advertised in the Helena Independent Record the next two Saturdays. A notice will be mailed to all benefiting property owners, and public comments will be accepted until 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, July 30, 2025, at the Lewis and Clark County Clerk and Recorder's Office. The public hearing for the resolution to create the district would be scheduled for Thursday, July 31, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 330 of the City-City Building. Anyone who would like more information on the proposed resolution to create the district can contact me at the Public Works Department. Staff recommend the board approve Resolution 2025-49, the intention to create the Canal Circle Rural Improvement District, and open the 30-day comment and protest period. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for providing the map. Jessica, could you pull this out so I get a better idea of where this lies?
Sure. So, I don't have the boundary around this one, but you can see this same square, and I'll zoom out.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Tom? Andy?
We just... I know you've got 12 owners within that area, and you've got signatures requesting this for well over the 20% that we ask, or in fact, there's over half of the property owners that are asking for this. So, it looks pretty clearly like the folks want it there, and appreciate your taking the time to get that put together properly and following, you know, and complying with the wishes of the property owners there. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy? Okay. Is there any public comment? No public comment. Okay, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2025-49, intention to create the Canal Circle Rural Improvement District Number 2025-2 as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution to create the Canal Circle Rural Improvement District Number 2025 as presented by Jessica Makas. Is there any further discussion by the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item 3F on our agenda is a Resolution 2025-50, intention to create the North Hills Rural Improvement District Number 2025-3 as presented by Jessica Makas.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Again, Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today is the public hearing regarding Resolution 2025-50, intention to create the North Hills Rural Improvement District. Petition to create the district was received by staff for the purpose of improving and maintaining No Creek Court, Sleeping Giant View Drive, Pond Court, and a portion of Snowdrift Road. The proposed district is located in the North Hills area between Glass Drive and Collins Drive, just north of Luton Road. The petition was signed by 53% of property owners within the proposed district, satisfying Lewis and Clark County's policy to consider R I D petitions signed by at least 20% of property owners. There are a total of 41 properties included in the proposed district boundary. The general character of improvements includes drainage remediation, including the addition of culverts and gravel fill, and the addition of gravel surfacing throughout the road network. Financing of these improvements is estimated to total $87,429. Each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a 15-year debt service assessment of $220 annually. The general character of maintenance will include snow plowing, sanding, grading, material maintenance, drainage maintenance, signage, and other items as needed to preserve the road improvements. Annual maintenance is estimated to total $13,694, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a maintenance assessment of $334 per year. The total proposed assessment is $554 per property per year for the first 15 years, and then dropping to the maintenance assessment after the improvement loan is repaid. and then dropping to the maintenance assessment after the improvement loan is repaid. If the resolution is passed today, legal notice of the intention to create the district will be advertised in the Helena Independent Record the next two Saturdays. A notice will be mailed to all benefiting property owners, and public comments will be accepted until 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, July 30, 2025, at the Lewis and Clark County Clerk and Recorder's Office. The public hearing for the resolution to create the district would be scheduled for Thursday, July 31, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 330 of the City-City Building. Anyone who would like more information on the proposed resolution to create the district can contact me at Lewis and Clark County Public Works. Staff recommend the Board approve Resolution 2025-50, intention to create the North Hills Rural Improvement District, and open the 30-day comment and protest period. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions from the Commission?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
So you just said it at the end there, but that, just to clarify for those that are listening or for the Commission, that this is just the intent to create the district. It opens a 30-day comment period. The district would not be created unless there's an affirmative vote to do so on the 31st of July. So this, we've got over 50% of the folks that say, "We want this." Now everyone gets formally informed, and they have opportunity to comment and to let us know how they feel about this proposal. And then on the 31st is when we make the decision. So just, that's for both, the last two items, I just waited to allow it to kind of just affirm that, that process. Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything, Tom?
I was right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that handles it well. Thank you.
Okay. Standard operating procedure.
It is, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it's good to have a, a way of getting things done without reinventing the wheel. All right. Any, let's see, we've done the Commission questions. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, is, we need to have a motion, please.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-50, intention to create the North Hills Rural Improvement District Number 2025-3, as explained by Jessica Makis. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Resolution 2025-50, as presented by Jessica Makis. Is there any further comment from the Board or from the Commission? Seeing none. Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-50, intention to create the North Hills Rural Improvement District Number 2025-3, as presented by Jessica Makis, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item number 3G on our list is Resolution 2025-51 relating to 22,642.46 bond for the Lewis and Clark County Han, parentheses, Han Road Rural Improvement District Number 2023-1, fixing the form and details and providing for the execution and delivery thereof and security therefore, as explained for us by Jessica Makis. This seems a little different. I hope you've got a good, clear explanation.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Yes, again, Jessica Makis, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. That's a complicated way to see an intercap loan drawdown. So we have before us today for your consideration, Resolution 2025-51, authorizing participation in the Montana Board of Investments of the State of Montana Intercap Loan Program and the related closing documents. On February 16, 2023, the Commission authorized financing of improvements for the Han Road Rural Improvement District Number 2023-1. Improvements for this Rural Improvement District, which you can see on your map highlighted in red, included the addition of gravel, grading and compaction, and application of magnesium chloride, and paving the transition of Han Road and the North Montana Avenue intersection and mailbox pullout with a three-inch asphalt mat. The final project cost, including the required 5% for the RID revolving fund, came to $22,632.46. Resolution 2023-11 to levy and assess this district was passed on February 16, 2023, and established the assessment of $48 per property per year for a period of 15 years. This assessment will be used to repay this loan and will be assessed until it's paid off. Just to recap here, when we create these Rural Improvement Districts, we go through this series of three public hearings to create the district. It's finally, at the end, levied and assessed, which adds the assessment to the tax bill, and it also gives us the ability to then apply for a loan for the initial improvement work. We apply for that loan, and then the construction can happen. Once that construction is complete, we take the loan for the exact amount of construction. Before that, it's only estimated. So this process will draw down the loan for that exact construction amount of 2,000, or excuse me, $22,632.46, and begin the repayment process to the Board of Investments for this, for this loan. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2025-51, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions? Andy, Tom?
Just, if I might, just a note that, you know, while we, county basically works without very much DAP, this is one case where we go out and, and borrow some money from the state investment, Board of Investments, and, and rather than tying up county capital, keep it from other, doing other projects in other parts of the, and the folks that are involved in this, in this project pay that interest for the special improvement district that they're, they're doing. Is that right?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf, that is correct. So the interest is worked into that repayment price and assessment, and that assessment is added to the tax bill. And that is why Rural Improvement Districts do have to follow such a robust process to be created, with a couple rounds of, you know, initially that petition of initial support is required, and then there are two rounds of legal notice that let people know how this assessment will be added and the terms and all of those details. So it's, it's a lengthy process, but a transparent one, I believe.
And follow-up question?
Go for it, Tom.
How many, how many of these special districts do we have now around the county?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf, we have about 150 throughout the county at this point.
And, and there aren't a lot of them that have debt, and other than starting up? What, maybe a third of them or something like that?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf, I would say less than a third at this point have debt. So the way Rural Improvement Districts work, right, is that there's an initial improvement, and this, this process and this program offers a way to finance that initial improvement. Once that's paid off, the district then is able to use maintenance funds to maintain that improvement through the life of that improvement. And once that improvement reaches a point where it's no longer maintainable, that's when we would consider a new, a new district, a new rural improvement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate the detail that you go through, the work that you do, working with all these different people in different neighborhoods to get the roads the way they want them. So I know it's a big job, and, and I really appreciate the great work you do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Tom. Anything, Andy? Okay, let's ask if there's any public comment. Seeing no public comment, how about a motion?
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-51 relating to $22,632.46 bond for the Lewis and Clark County Han Road Rural Improvement District Number 2023-1, fixing the form and details and providing for the execution and delivery thereof and security therefore, as explained by Jessica Makis. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-51, as presented by Jessica Makis. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-51 relating to the $22,632.46 bond for the Lewis and Clark County Han Road Rural Improvement District Number 2023-1, fixing the form and details and providing for the execution and delivery thereof and the security therefore. All those in favor say?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Boy, you've got quite a record here, Jessica, if you're just skinning through these. You must do good work. Item 3H, Resolution 2025-52, relating to $29,894.74 bond for the Lewis and Clark County Lucky Strike Road Rural Improvement District Number 2024-1, fixing the form and providing for the execution and delivery thereof and security therefore, as explained by Jessica Makis.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Last, last thing today. Again, Jessica Makis, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. You have before you today for your consideration, Resolution 2025-52, authorizing participation in the, in the Board of Investments of the State of Montana Intercap Loan Program and the related closing documents. On August 13, 2024, the Commission authorized financing of improvements for the Lucky Strike Rural Improvement District Number 2024-1. This district is on the screen. It's not highlighted in a color, but I left the, excuse me, the blue outline around it, just nine properties in this district. Improvements include drainage, included drainage remediation and culvert installation, the addition of approximately 1,347 cubic yards of gravel road surfacing, and watering, watering grading and compaction of the new material of the, on the full extent of Lucky Strike Road, which is approximately .4 miles in length. The final project cost, including the required 5% for the RID revolving fund, came to $29,984.74. Resolution 2024-86 to levy and assess this district was passed on August 13, 2024, and established the assessment of $894 per property per year for a period of 15 years, based on the initial loan estimate of $78,079 with estimated construction costs. This project, once completed on-site, there was a lot of additional ditch work estimated, and a lot of additional drainage work that was initially estimated. Once on-site, a lot of that work was able to just be done with a grader, and we didn't have to have a lot of excavation and, and things like that that were initially estimated for when, when we analyzed this project at the onset. So with that reduction, we'll be reducing this debt assessment component down to $343.03 per property per year until the loan is paid off. So we'll work with the accounting team to adjust the loan, and then also to, we'll pass another resolution to adjust the assessment. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2025-52. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions from the Commission?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Just another indication of great work. Good news, getting to borrow less than we expected, and the, the work on the ground was less complicated than first suspected. So that's great, and their, their assessments will be a lot lower in terms of their repayment of loans. So that's great. Good news. Thank you very much. Ready to move forward, Commissioner Payne. Thank you.
Tom, do you have anything?
Nothing more.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2025-52, as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-52 relating to $29,894.74 bond for the Lewis and Clark County Lucky Strike Road Rural Improvement District Number 2024-1, fixing the form and providing for the execution and delivery thereof and security therefore, as presented by Jessica Makis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Where'd you go? Are you done? Oh, okay. Next up is Jen Garber. Item 3I, Consulting Services Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Milliman, Incorporated, as presented by Jen Garber. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning, Chair Payne, members of the Commission. My name for the record is Jennifer Garber, Accounting Manager for Lewis and Clark County. I am here today requesting Commission approval of consulting service agreement not to exceed $5,500 between Milliman and Lewis and Clark County to provide actuarial services in support of implementation of Gatsby Statement 101 for compensated absences. For the record, Gatsby stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Accounting and Finance have both reviewed the contract, and I'm here today to recommend approval. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Is there questions from the Commission? Andy, you?
Garber, thanks for being here. I think I understand this, but I'm just trying to imagine sitting on my couch watching this and what, what, if someone said, you know, what are, what does an actuarial do? Or what are we trying to accomplish with this? Just a general overview of what we're trying to, trying to do here, so.
Sure. Thank you for the question. So an actuary will analyze data to calculate the county's historic rate of use. Gatsby 101 is asking that the county account for amounts of leave accrued at fiscal year and more likely than not to be paid in a future period prior to or at retirement. And it's a more complex data analysis based on the fact that we have, you know, county HR policy. We also have collective bargaining agreements that will change how those things are paid out. So the actuaries, they're, they're really people that get into the weeds and look at statistical data.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair Payne.
Thank you. Tom, do you have anything?
And just a comment, it sounds like we're just working on trying to make sure that everything is upfront and handled in an appropriate manner, and, and that the money being spent for the taxpayers is, is handled properly.
That would be correct, and, and making sure that we're in compliance with governmental standards is, is the most important thing as we implement a new standard.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the Consulting Services Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Middleman, Incorporated, as explained by Jen Garber. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Consulting Services Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Milliman, Incorporated, as presented by Jen Garber. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Misty Edwards, Resolution 2025-55 to create additional user fees as recommended by the Lincoln Solid Waste District, presented by Misty Edwards. Good morning, Misty.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commission, for the record, Misty Edwards, County Finance. And before you this morning is a resolution to create new user fees for the Lincoln Solid Waste District. On April 22, 2025, the Lincoln Solid Waste Board met and voted to create two additional user fees for the Lincoln Container Site. On June 6, Resolution 2025-35, intent to create the Lincoln Solid On June 6th, Resolution 2025-35 intent to create the Lincoln Solid Waste user fees was passed by the Board of County Commissioners. Legal ads appeared in the Helena Independent Record on June 7th, 14th, and 21st with public comments due to the Clerk and Recorder's Office by Wednesday, June 25th. Three public comments were received during the Lincoln Government Day Meeting. All three comments expressed concern that creating a furniture fee in particular could lead to an increase in illegal dumping on local public lands. Today is the time set for the public hearing. Staff requests the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution 2025-55, creating the new Lincoln Solid Waste user fees as recommended by the Lincoln Solid Waste Board. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Misty. Any questions, Tom or Andy?
Chair Payne, looks like there's quite a few items that are not changed, but maybe talk a little bit about the changes that were required there.
Sure. Commissioner, two fees were created new this year. The rest of the fees will all remain the same. Those two new fees are a construction and demolition fee. That'll be $15 a cubic yard. Customers of the Lincoln Solid Waste District will be allowed to use their solid waste permit for small construction and demolition projects up to two yards. So anything over two yards will be charged $15 a yard. This is meant to capture contractors that are using the container site. And the second fee, the small furniture fee, is for couches, chairs, and mattresses. And that comes as a result of us, of the county, moving the solid waste operations of Lincoln to the landfill. Lincoln will be billed for mattresses and such, and so we're just capturing those fees back.
Good. All right. Thank you.
I have a question. On the memo that you provided to us, in the final paragraph, states that staff requests the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution 2024-61.
Madam Chair, that was a typo. I didn't change it, but I did read the correct resolution number into record.
Okay. I'm glad of that, and it's not just my imagination.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's been taken care of. Let's see. Any more comments from the Commission? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the, technically, let's see, the Resolution 2025-55 to create the additional users' fees as recommended by the Lincoln Solid Waste District, presented here by Misty Edwards. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution to create, Resolution 2025-55, to create additional user fees as recommended by the Lincoln Solid Waste District. All those, is there any other comment from the Commission? All those approve. All those in favor of this motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Misty. Oh, boy, she's quick, isn't she? All right. Next on the agenda is item 3K, Resolution 2025, Setting the Salaries for Certain Elected Officials. Wow, this is important stuff. Presented by Carrie DeRozier. Carrie?
Good morning, Chair Payne, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Carrie DeRozier, Human Resources Director with the County. Before you this morning is Resolution 2025-53, Setting the Pay for Most Elected Officials for Fiscal Year 2026. The compensation is based on the same 2.13% cost of living increase given to all county employees, as well as any applicable additions required by statute or county resolution, and is shown in Exhibit A attached. The recommendation for salaries was presented and approved by quorum in a publicly noticed meeting of the Lewis and Clark County Compensation Board on June 18th. Staff recommends your approval of Resolution 2025-53.
Thank you, Carrie. Any comment? Andy, Tom?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Just affirmation, DeRozier, this is our, we've used our normal process, public meeting with the Compensation Board, the elected officials. The proposal is that they are treated exactly the same as, in terms of the cost of living increase, as all the other county employees, and this has been our normal process since I've been here anyway. You and I have probably been here together. Is that accurate, just to put it on the record?
Commissioner, to confirm, yes, we pretty much did. We did everything the same as we've done in the past, provided and approved, as far as the Compensation Board, the same 2.13%, or same COLA that was approved for county employees in the budget process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair Payne.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2023-53, as presented by Ms. DeRozier.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution setting the salaries for certain elected officials, as presented by Carrie DeRozier. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Carrie? Item 3L, Resolution 2025-54, Setting the Salary for Lewis and Clark County Justice of the Peace and Establishing Office Hours. Carrie?
Chair Payne, members of the Commission, before you this morning is Resolution 2025-54, Setting Pay for Fiscal Year 2026 and Establishing the Office Hours for Justice of the Peace. The salary for the Justice of the Peace is based on the same 2.13% cost of living increase given to all county employees and other elected officials. The base salary for these elected officials was approved through vote of the County Compensation Board through a publicly noticed meeting on June 18th. Staff recommends your approval of Resolution 2025-54.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions from the Commission?
Just might explain why this is handled differently than the other elected officials.
Commissioner, so I think the office hours is handled a little bit differently for the Justice of the Peace, and because we're establishing that in the resolution here, I just went back years and years, and it's just always been done that way, so I kept it separated.
Okay. Thank you.
I had the same question. Nico or Keegan, is there a statutory requirement that we do this separately? Do you know?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, so the process can be done the way the county has always done it. There's the requirements of a similarity in pay with additional statutory exceptions. I think historically, my understanding is the county has done this separately because with the resolution for the Justice of the Peace, you're also setting those hours. And so by bifurcating that, you're not confusing the issue of, are the hours related to the other elected official offices, but this is just for the Justice of the Peace.
Thank you, Nico. You make me feel better. Okay. There are comments from the Commission. Is there public comment? No. And let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-54, Setting the Salary for the Lewis and Clark County Justice of the Peace and Establishing Office Hours, as explained by Carrie DeRozier. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-54. Any other comments from the Commission?
Chair Payne, just want to thank Carrie, and everyone has worked on this, like, has been said, and the questions. It's complicated, and there's all kinds of ins and outs, and law that has to be considered and make sure that we're all on track. So I just appreciate the attention to detail and getting us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair Payne.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-54, Setting the Salary for Lewis and Clark County Justice of the Peace and Establishing Office Hours. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie. Next on our agenda is item 3M, a presentation of the Fiscal Year 2026 Preliminary Budget, as presented by Mr. Frank Cornwell. Frank?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Frank Cornwell, Chief Financial Officer of the County. I will be presenting the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2026 today. Note that for the next couple of weeks, we will be advertising a public hearing for July 15th, and then moving to final adoption at that time. This is a little overview of our budget process, which officially begins in March, when the Commission establishes budget parameters and provides instructions to the departments. The departments use the guidance given to them at that time to compile their budgets. Then in late May, all the departments meet individually with the Commissioners to go over those budgets. Then in June, the Commission engages in budget work sessions to assess all the requests and provide funding for the fiscal year. Progressing from there, we transition to the preliminary budget, which is today, and followed up by the final budget in mid-July that I just had mentioned that is being advertised now. As we, just as a reminder, as we walk through this, this is a combination of all the results that we've already seen, all the work sessions, the presentations in May. And this is just really kind of like a sandwich of all of that work kind of put into one big bundle here. And I'll be highlighting any major changes. There really wasn't much this year. It was a good status quo budget, so we'll probably fly through this fairly quickly. We always like to highlight the Commission goals. You know, we have four of them, the develop, maintain, culture of customer service, engage in, effective long-range planning, improve communication between departments, community partners, and the public, and efficient and effectively manage public resources. The ones on the right are the ones that I think that our departments really focus on when we're building these budgets. Long-range planning, which comes in with CIP and avoiding debt, or I guess capital improvement plans, sorry, just to get that on the record, or CIPs. And then every year, we always see, you know, the department is trying to, you know, even though you give them and approve their budgets, they always try to come back and have their budgets underneath the amounts that you guys have approved. So they do a really good job of that, and we see that year in and year out, which really does help our reserves in the long run. So to get into some of the details of the combination, or when we combine all of the results of these countywide budgets in fiscal year 2026, the total overall expenditure is amounting to $130.1 million. Note that personnel expenses are budgeted for $40,000, or $40.3 million, or yeah, $40.3 million.
You want to start that number over again?
Sorry. For the personnel costs, we like to point this out every year. This is, we are budgeting for 2026 $40.3 million, which includes the 2.13% cost of living adjustment or COLA. Overall, there is just a 1.8% increase from the prior year, fiscal year 2025, which is only $2.3 million, which is pretty low increase year over year. I guess the lowest one I've seen since I've been here. This is my third presentation.
Can I ask a question? The increase, including personnel, is 1.8%.
In total expenditures year over year, too.
Didn't we give a 2.13% cost of living increase? Doesn't that, I mean, can you sort of?
Absolutely. Good question, Chair Payne. So we've seen this year in ONM, if I was to show you last year's, that there was a kind of flatline, or operations and maintenance this year. What we've seen with the departments is that overall, across the county, it's about the same. So with that kind of maintaining a lower increase, it's offset some of the total increase across the county. So it's kind of an interesting thing, and it kind of depends, we've seen a lot of these, I'll kind of remind you, is that we've seen a lot of these presentations already across the board. Each department is different. Some have ups and downs, some departments this year, just across the board, outside of maybe elections, seeing a decrease in ONM. I don't know if that was because they are more confident in inflation kind of getting under control, and so they were able to kind of keep things more stable in that category. Also, internal transfers went down. CIP transfers were about the same. Capital LA was about the same, so that was really the difference there. So you had a 2.1% increase in the COLA. Also think that is just one piece of the personnel costs as well. That's just the salaries piece, that doesn't include the health insurance and other things. So it's a little complicated, but like I said, more of the details were explained across in each individual budget. So if you have any questions, I can get into more of that later if you want.
Okay. I'm looking at the table that you currently have up. And in the left-hand column for FY 2026, that is the actual dollar amount.
Budgeted for fiscal.
That's for the whole thing. It isn't an increase. This is what it is.
Right.
And then in the percent column, the percent is the percent of our entire county budget.
Correct.
So transfers to CIP fund 3.3%, it's $4,263.
Yes, Chair Payne, what that's presenting, the way I would explain it is, of the $130 million that you have budgeted to spend in FY 26, those percentages on the right are explaining, and a kind of a higher detail as to where those budgeted monies are going. This is, and like I said, this is year over year, this is a pretty standard status quo. There isn't much change. If we were to compare last year's percentages to this year's, they're almost identical. You would see personnel costs go up a little bit, and an ONM percentage may go down a little bit. And this is, it's just kind of noisy year over year, over time. You get a little bit more accurate, and gets, especially when you get more actuals data into the budget, but we've seen this year over year. This is pretty standard.
Thank you, Frank. It was really helpful.
Thank you. And then moving into the revenues across the county. And then moving into the revenues across the, the county. I get ahead of myself here. Total revenues for fiscal year 2026 amount to 104.1 million. The increase in revenues from mill levies can be attributed to a higher inflationary factor of 2.11%, which is half the rate of three-year average of the Consumer Price Index or the CPI. Additionally, we factor in a 1% growth in anticipation that overall revenues will not increase significantly. Oh, we also anticipate overall revenues will not increase significantly over, year over year, so another small increase of 2.15%. We have budgeted a net decrease in the county reserves totaling 26 million. This can, the decrease can be attributed to a combination of factors, kind of holding on to one-time expenses of ARPA, which is 1.1 million. Also, we have quite a bit of carryforward of reserves that need to be budgeted to be spent down, and also the capital improvement plans as well as, is, is a spend down. So as we save, many years, we spend more than what we're bringing into those plans, which is very strategic, very on-brand, is very, it's a good result, so we're not taking on debt. We're using those CIP reserves to fund long-term projects.
If I might ask a question?
Sure.
That, somebody looking at that might, might have questions about what's normal in reduction and how much of our CIP do we, or how much, how much in our reserves do we normally take as a reduction there? And if I understand this right, basically, the difference is, we arrive at that figure by looking at the 130 minus the, minus the 104.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph.
The 26, isn't it?
Yep. About half of that 26 is spend down of capital improvement plans, so about 13 million. The remaining, there's a lot of RID maintenance in there as well, which is a spend down every year. So that's, I think it's about 7 million, and the remaining amount is reserves that we just didn't spend in the prior year, so you have to budget in order to, to be in compliance with state 33% rule. So this is, this is a very standard way of looking at our budget. I've been here, this is my third presentation, and that number, I remember the first time I saw that, I had, had to look into it and get an explanation, and sure enough, there was an explanation, and it was the fact that we have the CIP, mostly to do with the CIP spend down.
And, and maybe we should, if I can follow up, please?
Sure.
We should explain a little bit once again for the publics, notice how, how extensively we use that and how each, how each department plans that as, as part of their budget.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph, yes, we, all departments are required to have a capital improvement plan, especially, specifically the ones that are larger and the ones that need them the most. Public Works and Public Safety, they have a lot of vehicles, roads and bridges. We need to, to save, to, to replace those internally, and if we don't have to take on debt, it just saves the county a lot of money. So, for example, we have, I, I don't have the number off. Say, for example, in our road budget, we have $20 million in road CIP saved up. That's $20 million that we can earn on interest, and also we are prepared to be active, to be able to spend that money when, say, a road grader or something comes up and something has stopped working, we have the monies available to replace those very nimbly, and the CIPs have been very, very effective. This is, I think we're going on, I think we've been building these up for over a decade. My predecessor, Nancy Everson, really worked hard to get these built up. Not all of them are fully funded. They're about fully funded. I think they do a really good job of getting there, or getting close. The other thing that we see, I would like to point out, is it's, it can be tough to execute these projects because they are long-range projects. Sometimes you get a truck, for example, you can order, order one, one of the large graders at Public Works, and it could take a year or two to get that in and have to pay that bill, but we like to have that budget for, within the year that they know that they want that capital, that piece of capital or asset. So what can happen is, these, this, these capital improvement projects can be moved to the next year. So I would say actually, a, a big chunk of that 13 million that we plan on spending in '26 was stuff that we had planned on spending in '25 that just got moved to '26, and that is very normal action to take here with CIPs.
Just a comment, Chair Payne, I, I kind of like to reserve, refer to this as the Dave Ramsey plan, plan for, for local government, because with, by not taking on debt, but planning ahead for, for capital improvements and capital projects, we're saving the taxpayers that money, that, that interest money that you talked about, and, and we've got the money there. And I, since I've been here, I've seen several instances where we've wound up having an opportunity to buy a piece of equipment at a, at a reduced price because we had that money set aside. We were able to take advantage of some really good deals that were available that we wouldn't be able to do if we didn't have that reserve money, planning to replace the equipment. So it's a, it's a, it's a great program, and, and I'm amazed as I talk to people in other local governments around the state, how few local governments use that kind of a, of a capital improvement plan that, like we should be doing in our own personal spending, you know? And, but bringing, bringing that Dave Ramsey plan into, 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 into the local government saves the taxpayers a bunch of money.
Commissioner, completely agree. I just got a phone call today from Public Safety asking, or talking to me about how they were appreciative of the CIP because they are purchasing vehicles this, next coming year, and, and because they have the, the monies they can get ahead of potential tariffs or any increases that on the market. So they, they, they were estimating about a $40,000 savings by being ahead of this. And so that, in addition to their interest they're earning on, in their CIP, and they're also saving money, being able to be nimble and purchase them very swiftly and, and, and just immediately. So this, this is a really good result. I've seen, seen this since I've been here, that the county is saving a lot of taxpayer money doing this. So, thank you. And moving on to the All Purpose Fund, so we're going to hone in on, on that piece. This is the, one of the larger portions of the countywide budget, but we always present this and focus on this for you every year. The All Purpose Fund expenditures are at 20 million point, or 20.2 million. This is a 3.7 increase, percent increase over the previous year, mainly due to a busy election season. We know we have four elections coming up, and also increases in our health insurance costs are the main contributors to that 3.7% increase. Going down to the All Purpose Fund revenue, All Purpose Fund revenues are at, are budgeted to be at 17.4 million. This is an 8.39% increase, which is due to the permissive levy monies coming in to help offset some of the health insurance claims, and also an increase in local option tax. We've seen that just continue to grow year over year. We're budgeted to have a net decrease in the All Purpose Fund of 2.8 million, which is, which is standard and strategic, as we've talked about, when we talked about the countywide decrease, and is supported by healthy reserves, and also is, we, we also have, just as a part of that decrease, we have a CIP contribution of 1.2 million that comes out of the All Purpose Fund, so available funds to go towards that CIP investment, I would say.
One other comment that I think is, is important to keep in mind during the last legislative meeting or session, of there were grants, and there are state grants, and we compete with other political entities for these grants, and I'm pretty sure there were a couple of of these grants that the reason we had them was, we had match funds right now, and so it, it's really a useful tool.
Chair Payne, absolutely. We work very hard to protect our reserves, to be, I keep saying nimble today is the kind of my word of the day, but we're, to keep our head on our swivel, and we were able to take advantage of, of grants, especially with those match, match dollars, that it's really, really useful to be able to offset those costs and, and get the, those additional services to our citizens. Moving on to Slide 8, here's just an example of our All Purpose Fund mill levy, which will be affected by the inflationary increase of 2.11% and an estimated growth factor of 1%. And also note that this will be certified by the Department of Revenue early August, fingers crossed that that happens this year. I know the Department of Revenue is very busy implementing new laws that came out of the session this year, but they are required by law to certify our market values by, I think it's going to be, I think August 4th or August 5th this year, so here's hoping they're able to do that. Countywide reserves are estimated to be at 38% at the end of fiscal year 2026, of, which is of expenditures of $50.2 million. Countywide operating reserves are estimated to be at 31% of expenditures, or $35.1 million. The All Purpose Fund operating reserves are estimated to be at 27% of expenditures, or $5.3 million. The county requires operating reserves to be around 25% or 90-day expense, expenses, just as a note. All of these are above that 25% requirement and also below the 33% for the funds that receive mill levy funds, so that 33% only applies to funds receiving 38, 33, I'm sorry, mill levy funds. So countywide, we're at 38%, but that is still in compliance because those are, including funds that do not have to follow the 33% rule. So, oh, and the countywide capital reserve is estimated to be $12.4 million at the end So we're going to go through all of these fund types. As you know, the, the county is kind of made up of about 100 different types of small businesses, is the way we look at them, and this is a way to separate them and give them some, a way to kind of categorize them in accordance with GASB or general, generally accepted accounting standards. So we'll go through one by one on each one of these. Starting with the All Purpose Fund, which covers the general operations, and it has been estimated to have expenses at $20.2 million for fiscal year 2026, and it also includes, which includes several different departments listed. As you know, these, these are core administrative and operational funds that all are landing underneath the general fund or All Purpose Fund. Ooh, this one actually. So in Slide 11, we have the Special Revenue Funds, which, which are restricted for specific It includes 19 different tax levy funds with an estimated $41.3 million in expenses for 2026. Also, I'll move to the next one. Okay, and then Special Revenue Funds also include around 30 grants or other restricted funds like gas and open space, homeland security, and others, including CARES and ARPA, which totaled to be $11.7 million for 2026. Then there's 23 health department grants, which are estimated to spend about $3 million for 2026. And then $8.5 million in RID and maintenance district spending. Moving down to our Debt Services Fund, we have very little debt. The only ones that we have are open space, we have a detention center remodel, which, which is due to be paid off, and rural improvement districts. There's 12 of those that have intercap loans. Just quickly, just some details on the open space bonds. We have issued $10 million, which is the maximum allowed. Most of these bonds, around $7 million, will be paid off by 2030, and the remaining $3 million will be paid off by 2034. The detention center remodel, which is also voted, was a voted levy, and that will be paid off in nine years. And I can also say with the, the debt, I'll go back real quick. The amount that we're spending down to our debt spend down at $1.8 million is 1.44% of our total expenditures for fiscal year 2026, which is a very small debt expense Capital improvement funds are budgeted to transfer $4.4 million and budgeted to spend $10.8 million, which still leaves 12.5 million in reserves. This is how we draw down our reserves and replenish them as well. Other capital funds include RID projects, which is around $400,000 a year, and road and bridge infrastructure projects, which is $5.2 million for the fiscal year 2026. Going into our Enterprise Funds, we are budgeting to spend down, or to, to spend $6.1 million, which includes mostly is our solid waste funds and the fairgrounds, which are our two enterprise fund types or programs. So these are ones that are self-funded, and they take care of themselves and are a great benefit to our county citizens. Then we have our Internal Service Funds. They're budgeted to spend $20.7 million in this year, or in fiscal year 2026. These Internal Service Funds include ITNS department, building and equipment departments, liability and health insurance funds, all of these funds that are internally serving one another. Note that for both insurance funds, we continue to see increased pressure. The liability fund has been seeing significant increases in premium, and the health insurance fund has significantly higher amount of claims that we've been trying to deal with year in, year out. I think we're going in the right direction with the with the help of Roger, Bolts and Carrie DeRouger. Uh, we have, I think, knock, knock on wood, we're going in the right direction. We can see a light at the end of the tunnel. Hopefully we can get these things smoothed out. I'd also like to note that we're not still, we're not there. So we've budgeted a $50,000 contingency fund contribution to the liability fund and $750,000 of contingency funds to be spent into the health insurance fund.
Usually, uh, Chair Payne.
Yes.
Give me those numbers again.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph, 50,000, uh, from the contingency fund will be going into the liability and property insurance fund. And then 750,000 will be going into the health insurance fund, the health group plan.
And are those, those numbers aren't showing up on our?
No, they're, I, I just, just pointing that out. We've, we've discussed this, um, in, in pretty good detail on our budget presentations before. And I think it's, I think it's just something that we should be, like every time I come up here and talk to you guys, I kind of want to remind you of this.
Yes. Anything else, Tom?
No.
Andy?
Thank you.
So slide 16 here is showing us, uh, you know, reminding us that we have a 2.13% cost of living adjustment or COLA. Also, we've added 2.09 FTE for the fiscal year. One is for our elections clerk because of significant increase in workload due to increased compliance and potential retirement of legacy temp staff. So we've had a lot of discussion on that. We know that there's a lot of work that is being done down in the elections with, uh, Amy Reeves' group. Also, we're making a 0.91 weed manager planner position to a full-time position. So that 0.91 goes to one. So we're adding 0.09, small little increase there. And then the last one is, uh, for a planning project manager, this position has been funded for many years and just needs to be approved for an additional FTE. Roger may have any information on that, but that's just been one that we've funded for many, many years. And we just haven't had an FTE associated with it. So.
Chair Payne.
Yes, Roger.
If I could just maybe build on a little bit, this just, Mr. Cornwell is doing excellent for us this morning. So I don't want to detract from that. But, um, on the COLA that you see listed at the top of this particular slide, the 2.13%, I just wanted to mention that our intention is consistent with our past practice to make that COLA applicable through most of the organization with a few exceptions to begin with the first payroll in the month of July, which is when we begin our new fiscal year. So in follow-up to what we're doing here today, that would be an action that we intend to take. And I just wanted to mention that to the commissioners and make sure that you're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions, Andy? Tom? Okay.
All right. Uh, slide 17 here with operations and maintenance. Uh, we usually point out our initiatives. These hasn't really changed much since I've been here, thankfully. Um, we always push to retain all current services and programs. And we've done a good job. I haven't seen any decline in that since I've been here. Um, and the, the departments work very, very hard to maintain the, the level of service that we have, if not increase that level. Our initiatives include, uh, mental health and diversion services. Also, as I mentioned before, the liability and in health insurance funds will, or we're currently monitoring those month in and day out, sometimes day to day to make sure we're achieving any cost savings that we can find. Our CIP plans, our capital project prioritization has always been a, uh, a prioritization or initiative that we, we've really prided ourselves on. Also, building and security and storage. This year we've included a $50,000, uh, budgeted line item for building security as you, as you guys know. I know I've kind of talked about this a little bit, but I'll, I'll talk about it a little more. And just to add to, uh, Commissioner Rolfe's comment earlier, um, we have a low debt ratio of 1.44% of budget, of total budgeted expenditures. And this is achieved through the departments demonstrating excellent financial management by effectively saving for capital improvement projects. This reflects their commitment to long-term planning and really helps the annual budget process. By having dedicated funds available, there's no need for last minute financial adjustments to support projects or incur additional costs. So departments can proceed with their initiatives promptly and effectively, knowing that the necessary, necessary funds are readily available. This approach streamlines project implementation and fosters a smoother workflow within the county. So just reemphasizing that, um, very proud of that plan and the way we approach this. This is, it makes my job a whole lot easier. I don't have to give a lot of bad news to the departments due to these plans. Now, so that concludes my presentation. Uh, just again, remember there's another public hearing. We'll be going over these numbers again on July 15th of 2025. And I want to say thank you to all the department heads. Without them, we couldn't have put these budgets together. They work very, very hard. Them and their financial folks, uh, were, and I've, you know, we said a lot of thank yous to them during their presentations, but I, I think it's worth thanking them again. Um, also thank you to Misty and Marty, um, and Roger's help as well. Carrie's help with the insurance, uh, issues that we're working through and we're continuing to work through. I really appreciate the guidance the commission has given as well. Um, yeah, it's been a, a great experience for me again this year and looking forward to next year.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Roger has something to say. Words of wisdom.
Commissioner Payne and commissioners, I, I would like to just, uh, add my thanks to the whole team that worked on our budget for this fiscal year, including our county commissioners. The clarity that you provide regarding the budget message that goes out is really important to this process. So I believe that what we've accomplished here is a budget to present to you and to our citizens that reflects the direction that the county commissioners gave us. And that's very important. I also want to add my thanks to Mr. Cornwell for the fine work he's done for us and, and, uh, his fingerprints. And he's mentioned Misty Edwards and many other people who's there, uh, have done a fine job for us. So, um, uh, commissioners, uh, provided you are ready to move forward. I would like to suggest that, that a motion to approve this preliminary budget as reflected in the presentation you've received from Mr. Cornwell today would be, uh, our request and recommendation to you.
Thank you, Roger. Andy, did you have a comment? Oh. Tom?
I, I've got a couple of questions I might ask if.
Yes, you should ask them.
All right. And, and I think, I think we need to, one of the things I, I think it's really important. Uh, you, you've been very transparent about what we're doing here. As we, as we go forward, we're going to see some slight increase in taxes to the people because, because of unexpected, uh, costs. And, but the, the tax increase is really going to be pretty small. And, and maybe for the, for homeowners, they may even see some reduction because of the changes legislators have, have done. That's been somewhat transferred over to commercial property and to expensive vacation homes. And, uh, but, uh, I think homeowners are going to find, find some relief when they get their, or to some extent, when they, when they get their tax bills this, this fall. I think the, the one concern, the one concern, and we've talked about this several times about the, the extra, the funding of our, um, insurance, health insurance plan for our, uh, for our employees, which, which we believe we have to do, have to have a very competitive health insurance plan in order, in order to keep from losing employees to, um, to other, other places. And, uh, we hit, got hit with some big expenses in that plan, but, um, because it's a self-funded plan, plan. So I, um, I think, uh, I think that the, the expenditure particularly for that is necessary. In order to keep good employees and to be able to attract good people to come to work for, for the county. But I, I just really appreciate the thoroughness that you've gone through here. And, and I think that when people get their tax bills, particularly homeowners, they're, they're going to be pleased. Now, tax assessment are going to be coming out over the next, uh, few weeks from the state. The state reassesses our properties and they tell us that, that, uh, state, statewide, that properties are going to go up around 20% in assessment. But fortunately, the legislature has decided to make it easier on, on homeowners and, and on, um, properties that are long-term rentals. And, uh, people who own apartments and they're, they're used for long-term rental. And, uh, I, I think that, that when homeowners get their bills in the fall, they'll be pleasantly surprised. Might be a little shocked at the new assessments coming out in the next month or two, but the actual tax bill should be halfway decent. Thank you for your transparency and all this. Thank you for the, the, the work that you, you've done to, to, uh, do it. And, and I, I think a lot of credit goes to, to you, to the department heads and, and, and to our, our, our chief administrative officer for, for pay, pay attention where the money is going and, and making every department and every individual accountable for the money they're spending and the money they're using here in the county. And I, I just think the team is, has really worked hard to, to treat the taxpayers right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair, Chair Payne, Commissioner, just to, absolutely, we're going in the right direction. The, just to address those two items, uh, we, we now have an actuary when it comes to our health insurance plan, and we're really working hard with him to, to get things correct. And I think we have, we have a plan and we're going to implement that and we're going to, I, I think we're going to be in good shape. Hopefully, again, in the next couple, two to three years, um, the, when it comes to the, the costs of, uh, the, or the, the adjustments on the taxes for this coming year, it is going to be a very interesting year. I have a, I'm, I'm very kind of excited to see where things go. I'm a little nervous because there's a lot of work that the Department of Revenue needs to do this year. There's, they're in a reappraisal year, like you said. And we expect the, the, our homes to go up this year. We also know that they have implemented a tiered tax approach on our homes and reduced the tax. I guess the, the tax rate on, on homes and put more on other items. Um, and so the shift is kind of shifting back to, um, other, like you said, it was the commercial, commercial property and, no, like, uh, like Airbnb's and, and those. So it's going to be a very interesting year. Note that in September, we will have a lot more detail as to what those are because you have to approve of that mill sheet in, uh, September of this year. So that comes in after we get our certified values from the Department of Revenue. You're going to get that and we'll, we'll compile all the data and results of the, of the certified values. Also, um, we'll be able to do an estimate as to what the tax will be on, on homes at that point. It will be an estimate. We'll see where it goes, but kind of excited. And I, and I also appreciate your kind words and it's been, it's been a, a, a really busy year, but it's been a very successful year. Thank you.
One other thing I just, I'd like to mention.
Tom?
To, and, and I know, I, I, I see where in order to make things come out good, we're, we're even seeing some shift from one department to another, uh, a couple less employees in one department, a couple more in another, where, where there, where there is that need. And if, if we're looking at, we've, we've got just short of 400 employees total, total, if I remember right.
Yep.
And, and an increase of, of just over, uh, right at two, uh, two people. So we're, uh, we are, you know, our actual number of employees, we're increasing about one half of, of a 1% in numbers of employees.
Yeah.
But there are some shifts between departments where, where, uh, there's a couple less going to one department and a couple more going to another in order to accommodate where there's, where there's a need.
Absolutely, Commissioner, that we really are appreciative of, of, um, Criminal Justice Services and the Public Safety Department, uh, Office getting together and allowing for, uh, two detention officers to be moved to the Criminal Justice Services. That was a, I think it was an effective move and a wise one. And I really appreciate the departments getting together and, and coming to an agreement on, on really appropriate use of that, of those FTE. So that, that's just great to see. So really appreciate that.
Another thing I, if I might, Chair Payne, uh, when I, one of the best things that under the, under, um, Mr. Bolts' guidance that we did shortly after I got on the commission was to, um, establish a, a purchasing and grants department. And I, I absolutely believe that has saved us money. By the way, we're handling those things and, and we've got qualified people that are out looking for grants. And I think that's going to be a little more competitive. It sounds like there's going to be, be some things that are that, that where it's going to be tougher to get some of those grants, particularly if on the federal level. We haven't seen huge amounts right yet, but there are some things that are, we used to get that, that we, we might be reduced. But, uh, I really, I want to compliment, uh, Roger's, uh, direction and, and suggestion that we do that. Here a while back and I'm, I'm sold now. I was, I remember I was a little, I was a little bit skeptical, but, uh, you were right. And, and I want to compliment you on that.
If, if I could just respond, thank you very much, Commissioner Rolfe.
Roger.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Chair Payne. Thank you very much. Really appreciate those good words. It's a fine team doing good work for us over there. Uh, I just, I, I have to say that, um, thank you for the kind words. But also, uh, our former CFO, Nancy Iverson played an important role in that too. And I just, just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
All right. Now, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
We have come to the point of our.
Chair Payne. All right. Make a public comment and then a motion.
Okay, the public comment. Well, just a second. So this, we have to approve the presentation even though there's no resolution or?
Chair Payne, it's a, just a preliminary budget and so to, to approve the preliminary budget and set the hearing for July 15th. It's already on our agenda, but I think that formal action is what we normally do. But we haven't, this is another opportunity for the public to weigh in on our budget. And so we haven't given them that opportunity yet.
Okay. So what you're saying is the July 15th hearing is already on our agenda.
It is, but typically we, we say, we make a motion to approve the preliminary budget and set the hearing, um, which is fine. But, uh, we also take public comment on the budget every time we meet and talk about it. So.
Thank you, Andy. You're just such a treasure trove of information and history. All right. So, um, is there any public comment on this matter? Nope. Okay. And we need a motion. Andy, why don't you state the motion?
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the preliminary budget and set a public hearing for the final adoption of our. for the final adoption of our twenty twenty six budget for July fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this presentation of the preliminary budget and set it for a hearing of July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and is there any further comment from the commission?
Chair Payne, please.
Andy.
Okay, just, this is where I'll give my verbal hug, and I just thank you to Frank and Misty and Roger, appreciate all of that. And then it, it, we kind of have the easy part in a lot of ways, make, make, it's a tough decision on some of this stuff, but uh, we are presented by the department heads and our elected officials uh with excellent, sound, appropriate, responsible budgets, time in and time out, time and time again, I guess I should say. And so just really want to thank them for being so considerate of the, the public's resources and uh trying to provide great services with uh the most reasonable budget they have, that they can present. So thanks, Frank, appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Payne.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no for the comment from the commission, let's have a vote. All in favor of approving the presentation of fiscal year twenty twenty six preliminary budget and setting it for a public hearing on July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now, the most patient man in the world, in the room, um, is there any public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of this commission that is not on the agenda I thought we were going to have a... Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.